I'd like to welcome you to our Board of City Commissioner meeting on October the 19th. I'll call the meeting to order. Call the roll, please ma'am.
A.G.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Shaw.
Present.
Dykstra. We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, okay. If you're able to stand, please stand and we will recite the Lord's Prayer. Keith.
Our Father. We are in heaven. God, King of the world. God will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever.
Commissioner Hall, will you lead us in pledge allegiance, please sir?
Sure. Position, attention, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull a couple of items just for a quick discussion if I could. One is one F on holidays. I just need a little bit of clarification and I believe the city manager has already spoke to that issue, but I would like to make a note on that one. And one G on the change orders.
Okay. Okey dokey.
Move we approve the other item.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Harris to approve all the other items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw, let's vote. Motion carries, okay, then we'll move to the ones we removed. Holiday schedule for 2016. What question do you have on?
I noticed that on December 23rd, it showed the Christmas Eve and it shows that it is observed. And I know this isn't a federal holiday observation, this is, I believe from what the city manager was telling me, this is a city observation. So I just wanted to bring it up, that clarification. And could you educate me how long the city's been doing this, I guess?
Sure, happy to do so. I know different jurisdictions have different holiday schedules. I don't know exactly how far back it goes, but historically, the city has provided Christmas Eve as a holiday, the 24th. Next year, that date falls on a Saturday. And when a holiday falls on a date that's already, on a weekend, either Saturday or Sunday, then if it falls on a Saturday, then the Friday before is a holiday, or the observed holiday date. And then if it falls on a Sunday, then the Monday is the observed holiday. And so, I think in terms of the overall number of days, the holiday schedule provided by the city is pretty consistent. Different jurisdictions, some may have Columbus Day as a holiday, some may not, we do not, and we elected to take the Christmas Eve as a holiday. And have done so for appears to be many years.
So Christmas is on Sunday this coming year?
Yes, sir.
On Saturday, yeah, that's typical for a lot of companies. Okay, do we need to vote on that, Mary Ann, or just wait and vote on both of them?
Either way.
Okay. Well, let's just go ahead and vote on this one, okay? Chair will entertain a motion on item number F. Now, after, are you cleared up with that?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Shaw, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Keith Hall, second.
James Harris beat me to the draw.
Let's vote. Motion carries, then let's discuss item number G. Approved change order number one for the Shawnee Splash Project.
Okay, if I could have James come up and educate me, I guess, on some of this. What, I guess, when I was going through these change orders, I noticed that in some areas it had like, a overhead cost and then it would have a for-profit cost in the same invoice. In other invoices, it would have a markup noted on it. So I guess I need you to educate me, did we not negotiate what a certain amount would be, or do any pre-negotiation with our vendors in regard to what a set cost would be on markup or for-profit and overhead?
On the subcontractors, no, there were no negotiations on that.
Okay, so it was just whatever they submitted is what we?
Yes, but it also had to, and we discussed the cost of each one of those as they'd done it, and it had to be a reasonable cost before we would allow them to do it, or we would have had to go a different route on that.
Do you look at what an overhead cost is and amount and explore with that vendor what that is, and what it's used for? And do we also look at what that for-profit means? I mean, we had a 10% overhead and then we had a 5% for-profit in the same, some of the same invoices. So I'm just wondering why we allowed both costs?
A lot of, a lot of the cost discussion was onsite, and for them to look at what we needed to do and to give us a cost for it, a lot of, as far as written down costs, didn't come till later on. Some of this stuff was things we had to figure out as the project went along, and sometimes why they were in the middle of it.
Okay, is that a consistent process that we do? I mean, do we not enter into agreements with our subcontractors?
We enter.
With a set amount of?
We enter into an agreement with the main, yeah, the general contractor, and then he hires out his subs.
Okay.
And he has the contract with those subs.
Okay, so he's the one responsible for those costs, overhead and markup and for-profit?
Well, anything added to the project, as far as cost that was done on the project, would be our responsibility if I okayed for that to happen.
Okay, I'd suggest that we look at a process, city manager, in regard to making sure that we look at both overhead and for-profit costs.
What's the highest one on, any one of?
10%, I'm not sure of the actual amount for the overhead, but 10% to me is pretty significant. If we had a larger amount on the invoice, it would have been substantial, I think, and with overhead also in there. So if maybe we could look at entering into some type of agreement, or at least knowing what we are looking at overall. And I know it's hard to do on those change orders, and you did an incredible job, I think, overall. From what I saw, you did get a lot of documentation and you did follow the process, I thought, very clearly. And you were very straightforward with those contractors, so I appreciate those efforts.
Thank you. We appreciate those comments. I think overall, given that it was about a $3.7 million project, $13,000 in change orders isn't too bad. But we did have to, as James said, we had to, it was kind of an iterative process, we're out in the field and something would come up and James, James would review and approve everything that was, that was, you know, that was done. But your point's also well taken in that, you know, there's not a consistent profit or overhead percentage listed, so we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You okay ma'am?
Good.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion then on item number G.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Shaw, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. We do encourage any citizens that have something they want to share with us to come forward. Okay, I see them all looking at you, I thought maybe they wanted, you were gonna come forward and tell us something. Okay.
You usually can't keep her quiet.
Not living Shawnee.
Okay, well move on to item number three. Presentation by Safe Events for Families regarding the annual Christmas Parade. Oh, here comes two guys, they're a little shady, I'm worried about this deal.
I knew they had something to say.
Santa's a little early.
Yeah, we borrowed this from the big man himself. Wes, we need you to come down if you could, please, sir. While he's coming down, you know, this will be the second year for Seth with the Christmas Parade. The theme this year is Christmas Through the Eyes of a Child. So that's the theme this year. One of the things that we're doing new is, in this wonderful hat that was borrowed from the big man himself, is the name of elementary schools. And we would like for you to do the honor in drawing this school. And what you're doing is, when you make the drawing, that school will be the selected school within, we will then go to that school and they will have some kind of contest with their kids. And one child from that school will be selected to ride on the float in his, in Santa's sleigh during the Christmas Parade. So it's an excellent opportunity, and so it'll be a revolving, we want to, we want to start this as one of the traditions and come to the commission meeting and be able to draw.
That's a great idea.
So with that, draw, we'll see which school we end up with.
He's had that on tape, I don't know.
You got this one?
You wanna read it?
I got two of them.
There you go.
Sequoia.
Sequoia School.
So we will be in touch with Sequoia School and work out the details with them, and then a child will be selected through that school and be able to ride on the Santa float with Santa during the Christmas Parade. So we're excited about that. There's a lot of things to come, just keep reading the paper.
One more time, tell us, how big is our parade?
Ours is the largest nighttime Christmas parade. Shawnee has two events that are very well noted. Christmas Parade being the largest nighttime Christmas Parade, and Bill and Bell, which is happening this weekend, which is Oklahoma's, is the central Oklahoma's largest fall festival. So our attendance last year ranged between 30 and 35,000 folks. 14 and a half tons of candy were given out, so the Dennis love us. So this is Bill and Bell week, so we've already started, the carnival's moving in, the flags, you've seen the flags if you've been down Main Street.
Up and down Main Street, have you noticed those?
So.
Noticed your signs all around town.
Signs are all around with the sponsors, different sponsors throughout the community.
And then how many floats did we have in a Christmas Parade last year?
Well, entries was in the low 80s, and then actual rolling floats was over 100, actual rolling.
It's a big parade. It's a huge parade, yeah.
So we have a lot of new things coming for the parade even this year to keep building on. I absolutely couldn't do it without our board of volunteers, which is great, is awesome, so.
Another one of the great events in Shawnee that are going on.
Well, we definitely appreciate that, and we appreciate all you folks as well, for the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is a public hearing. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone with a conditional use permit for property located 1101 West 45th Street. Justin?
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna mention, the applicant has submitted a notice to the planning department that they have withdrawn this application, so there's no action necessary. I pardon the commission.
Okay, then we'll just move on to item number five. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Shawnee Municipal Code to prohibit texting while driving. Chief France, did you want to say anything in this matter, or just?
This is just to get us on board with the state law that's currently out there. Cities across the state are adopting no texting ordinances, this falls in line with the state ordinance. It's not, there's been a lot of questions on this out in the media and in the public. It's not a perfect electronic ordinance, but it barely survived the state legislature last year. It's kind of the get your foot in the door, and we're gonna modify it. But if I remember correctly, we were like the 46th state to pass an ordinance of this type nature, so.
A lot of states have already passed it too. Does this go in effect, coincide with November 1st?
Yes, sir. What is their hesitancy, Chief France, in regard to the passage of this kind of action? What was the state's? You said that there's, we were the 46th in the nation to enter into this. What's the state's hesitation about doing this? Is it getting, having to issue the citations? Is it the manpower? Is it?
I think that's probably more of a political question. I mean, we're also one of those states that's the lowest on the seat belt, and a lot of people look at our seat belt fine as a joke in this state. And we've made attempts, I've been making attempts through my circles with the state legislature for about three years now, trying to raise the seatbelt fine, so it's not considered a joke in some people's eyes, or.
I don't consider this a joke at all.
Oh, no, I know you don't, but I'm saying that there's, there's.
I'm just trying to get clarification.
Trying to get some things through the state legislature sometimes is quite tricky.
Well, it's common sense to pass it right, and they don't want, it's common sense sometimes.
So.
Well, I guess I just wanted to know what their thought, if you had heard from the law enforcement side, what the hesitancy was.
Oh, we've been for this and for this for a number of years. I mean, there's a lot of laws that we like to see passed, but unfortunate.
Our state politicians has been reluctant to pass it.
Yes, sir.
And we don't know why. I could tell you, most of them text all the way to the Capitol and back. So they don't want to make it against the law, that's when they take care of their business.
So, I'm not gonna try to speculate on the intentions of our state legislature. I have a good relationship with our local legislators, and I think they do a great job, and they've been helpful on some other issues. But trying to get the whole legislature on board sometimes is a different story.
Well, at the same time they passed this, there was a lot of discussion about not talking on your cellphone and driving. And that's where, that's where, you know, where it really rose up, and so I think they, I was told by one of the state legislators that this was kind of a compromise for the time being to get this going and then the other, but there again, that was in his mind, is that, that's the complaint.
There's, there's a lot of issues, overall, there's a lot of issues with distracted driving. We would like to see some more teeth and input later, and we hope that will come about. But, I mean, a couple weeks ago, we had a person that was texting and took out about four city blocks. I guess they hit the accelerator instead of the brake and kept going and kept hitting the accelerator.
Can you tell us somebody's texting while driving unless they do have a record?
Like I said, this was kind of a foot-in-the-door type thing. It's, it's gonna be kind of hard to enforce the way it's currently, but we're bound by the state legislature at this point as to how it's word and written, so enforcement's gonna be a little tricky on it. I'm hoping that they will come back and modify the state law later on, but I'm making a speculation once again, so.
What's the city's policy for the employees of the city using city automobiles, or say, police officers texting while driving? Is there already a policy in place?
And does, I don't see any language in here, Ms. Carnes, in relation to the existing state law. Are we trying to be in compliance with the state law? Are we trying to set our own ordinance language here?
Which is in compliance with state law.
Okay.
It tracks state law.
Any other questions for Chief France?
I may we adopt a texting code.
Code prohibiting texting while driving. Have a motion to that, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra. Would you read the title, please ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance adding to Chapter 19, Article 4, Operation of Vehicles, Code of Ordinances of City of Shawnee, Oklahoma. A new section texting while driving, prohibiting texting while driving, in compliance with state law, providing penalty, providing exceptions, definitions, and providing for complication, repealer, and severability.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's vote. Motion carries. Let's see, item number six. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Shawnee Municipal Code prohibiting certain conduct during a declared emergency. Would someone like to make any comments on this?
I make a presentation to various groups about emergency preparedness, and in the course of doing that, I discovered that we still had a provision in our ordinances that state law no longer permits, and that is during a time of emergency, we can no longer prohibit or suspend the sale ownership, et cetera, of firearms or ammunition. So this is an amendment taking that section out, so that we'll be in compliance with the law, and instead putting in the prohibition, which is in state law. And then also in state law is a provision that if, if we take some action that makes someone believe that that's been violated, there's a way for them to get a remedy. The other thing this does is specifies that it's a Class C offense. A Class C offense is a fine of up to $500, but no jail time. That's things we've been trying to do, is get everything an A, B, C, or D offense, instead of having to look everywhere and change the numbers all the time, penalties. So that's what this is.
You want to have any questions, Ms. Mayor, further? Okay.
First, I'm sorry, could you explain, I guess, the, it basically makes it in concert with, with the state law?
Yes, at one time, state law allowed.
Sailing.
Well, it allowed at state level and at the local level for the authorities to prohibit, say, if there's a riot, to prohibit people from having their guns, wandering around with their guns, possessing their guns, buying new guns. And as the.
Laws have changed.
Gun regulations or lack thereof have evolved. This was a section that they went into and changed, and I'm not sure when it was, I stumbled across it. They left the other things alone, but they, they put these two sections in to replace the one that said we could regulate. It's, you know, it, these things are interesting, it prohibits already the possession of a Molotov cocktail, like it's Amber.
Sure.
Legal to me, you're gonna Molotov cocktail, but they left that in. So, things get amended over time as society evolves.
So the ordinance right now, as it sits, is actually more like confined than the state ordinance?
Yeah. As written now, it would give us powers that we just wouldn't have anymore, so, just trying to get it shaped up so we don't accidentally, somebody reading that downstairs in the middle of an emergency and sees that in our ordinances and thinks that we can ban all firearms, and then we do hit them, so.
Okay. Are you comfortable now?
Right.
Okay.
I got it.
Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Linda, second, ladies first, ladies first. Commissioner A.G., okay, would you read the title, please ma'am?
This is an ordinance amending and repealing portions of Chapter 11 of the Shawnee Municipal Code, setting forth acts which may be proclaimed prohibited in the event of an emergency, setting the penalty therefore, providing for complication, repealer, severability, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries.
Separate vote on the emergency, please.
Okay, entertain a motion for emergency clause?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner A.G. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion consideration and possible action for retention of counsel in the Circle D Pond Number 4 Inc. at Al versus City of Shawnee, United States District Court for the Western District of Oklahoma.
As you may recall, this is an action brought by Circle D Pond in response to our ordinance amending the pawn shop regulations to primarily get information sufficient to go into the computer to track stolen property. It, as you also may recall, gave all of us an opportunity to be defendants, and it combined the disputes they had with the county with the ones they have with us. Part of the demand in the first, in the lawsuit filed was that it accused the city of violation of the U.S. Constitution in terms of civil rights and sought money damages. Because of that, our insurance company, Oklahoma Mutual, I can't even talk tonight, Oklahoma Mutual Assurance Group provided us a defense with Steve Garry's and David Lee. They have, were successful in getting all the individuals out, separating us from the county, and also getting dismissed the civil rights claim, so there's no longer money damages. So that's, and at that point, Omeg says, okay, we've done everything, you're covered, we're out. We had anticipated that, we had also anticipated, though, that the court would say this is nothing but a dispute over municipal ordinance and would remand it to the Potawatomi County District Court, call it appendant claim, in which case I was just gonna pick it up and do it. They didn't do that, federal court has kept it. The answer is due on Thursday, it was actually done, due 10 days ago, but we got an enlargement since I wouldn't have an opportunity to talk to you. It's my recommendation, and I believe that of Justin's as well, that we go ahead and keep the law firm of Collins, Zorn, and Wagner, which is where these two lawyers are, and have them finish this out. There will not be a trial, a traditional trial in this case, there won't be depositions and that kind of thing. It's gonna be a motion practice. We'll file a motion to dismiss, or motion for summary judgment, rather. They'll file one, there'll be briefs. I talked at length with our lawyers, they believe that this is a defensible ordinance, and so we'd recommend that they go ahead and continue with it, they've done the bulk of the research, and the rate is the same rate they give our insurance company. And I'll tell you, when these lawyers are defending, they do insurance defense, but when they're defending their private clients, it's more like $300 now instead of $175.
You know, I find it interesting that if I go down and sell some copper tubing at the Salvation, I mean, not Salvation Army, down at the junkyard, I have to give them ID, you know, and do all that stuff. But yet TVs can come into, people don't want to, these people don't want to, they think it's a violation of the Constitution that some ID has to be given?
Well, I believe they feel like their, their position has been that it was a violation of their customers' rights, and the court said, well, that may be, but it's not a violation of your rights. That, you know, the, if you'll recall, when Chief France talked to you about this, one of the goals of it was to get an actual photo, as well as an ID of the person bringing the things in, but also a photo of the serial number. Because what happens is, to get these things back and a serial number, one number's missing, they're transposed, and then you have no way to return, to determine stolen property and return it, so.
You know, we had all kinds of problems when we first, years ago, I don't know if Chief France was here then or not, but when we tried to get the same pawn shop to check the federal gun registry to see if the guns were stolen, and they refused to do it, so we had to take some local action to get them to do that.
Well, our ordinance is designed to have the information that goes into a national database, so that if it's stolen somewhere else and comes in and it goes into that database, it's picked. it's picked up. Uh, I mean, Chief can tell you more about this, but it's my understanding, they, they attempted to work with all the pawn shops, both before, during, and after, and had no, is that right, Chief, no pushback from this pawn shop or anybody else.
Are they saying that, like, the, the other customers that say, want to use the pawn shop as, like, a temporary loan service or something? That maybe it's their rights that are being violated?
That's what they're saying, and, and the court said, well, they're not in here complaining, so, you know, the court said there's no civil rights, there's no civil rights being involved here.
Those people don't want to be vi, bothered with it, I think, you know, if they're trying to be...
If, if, if I had a stolen television I was pawning, I'd probably want to find some way for it to not be found, too.
Those, of, of course, those folks, I'm talking about people that say they, they have a little bit of, they want to just be quiet about it, and they don't want to go get a loan, they just want to use it like that.
Sure. Well, nobody's saying that so far, that they ha, they now have to register things and turn in their name, and, um, we haven't searched anything. I mean, the whole argument now is whether our ordinance is so much different and more restrictive than state law, that our ordinance is in some or all invalid.
I got you.
Um, it's a highly regulated industry, uh, this particular, uh, not necessarily the local, uh, Circle D, but the Circle D's, uh, pawn shops in other places have, um, resisted pretty much any change by the city or the, the city or the state, not generally been successful with that, so...
Are they a local business? I mean, like, where's that?
It's a chain sometime, it's a chain franchise, something.
Something.
Hey, Marian, do we know, do we have an estimate of what, you know, like, a cap or something on this? Do we know, you have the budget available, I assume?
There's not in the budget, it's, you know, it's hard to get a cap because so much of your work is dependent on how many motions the other side files, and do they appeal if they lose, and, and so forth, so, um...
Is there a reason that they would charge us for their West law, considering that's like a cost of doing business to me?
It's a dollar a minute, and if they use West law quite a bit, which most is my understanding,
you attorneys like to use the West law considerably, that could be an expense in itself, and I noticed in, and that was in item two, in item three of this contract, it also indicates that the hourly rates set forth could increase. Now, how will we know if they're increased? I see that it says that it'll give us prompt notification, but that leaves it subject to them.
Uh, we have the right to terminate the contract at any time, and we would do so if we thought it was, um, going to exceed, uh, what we thought was a reasonable time. The, uh, West laws, it's not so much that attorneys like to use it, it's that we don't have any options anymore. Um, the cost of, of, uh, library, the, many things you can't even get in books anymore. Uh, so, um, as I say, it's already been pretty thoroughly researched just for the motion to dismiss stage, so, you know, I can't tell you, like, I just can't tell you, because it, it's all, it's always dependent on factors beyond our control. I've worked with David Lee, um, on OMEG, uh, when OMEG has provided defense for my clients, and I have found them to be, um, very controlled in what they do. These are not people with big fancy offices, uh, they get in and get it done and get out, they're very economical, and, uh, that's the way they keep their contracts going, is to keep the expenses down as slow as they can.
Any other discussion?
Uh, just have a question, if, if the court finds in the plaintiff's favor, that, what does that mean to the city, that we just don't implement the new ordinance?
We haven't implemented it yet. It would mean that it, we would have to either, we would repeal the ordinance or adjust it if the court found it could be adjustable. There's, uh, the Chiefs, uh, our, the Chiefs Association has it on their legislative list for this year to get the state law changed, and I've asked for it to be put on OML's list as well, and we, uh, getting ready to have our first legislative, OML Legislative Committee meeting, and so, uh, we'll be working it again. It may turn out to be like the texting ordinance and the seatbelt ordinance that, for whatever reason, they, um, don't want to take the action, but...
Well, there's a powerful lobby.
There's a powerful lobby.
There's a powerful lobby, and, you know, I'm, I'm convinced that we need to do everything we can to, to help deter the, the burglaries that we have in our area. It's, it's just, it's awful, right, in the, in the surround, this, you know, in our community, not necessarily, you know, Shawnee and the, the county, you know, it's just, it's, it's pretty bad, you know, and, um, if this helps just a little bit...
What about, what about people that don't have an, an ID? Can they, can they still utilize the pawn shops? Is that, is that what this law does, the ordinance does?
Does it, do you want to...
As it's written, does, if, if, uh, say you've got a person without an ID, can they still use the pawn shop to, to do business?
Uh, no, the state already requires, the state law already requires it to present an ID.
Yeah, to have an ID or driver's license.
Some kind of ID?
Yeah, a picture ID.
Photo ID of some kind.
Go out to the salvage, they sell junk, for example, they, uh, they take a picture of your loan, and they take a picture of you, and take a picture of your driver's license or your ID.
Okay.
It's on junk metal, and then we're fighting over this.
What also does it difference that we ask for copies, now, we ask for copy of this photo ID?
Oh.
So that it goes into the computer, so that there's a record.
Got you.
Maybe we hire the attorneys, direct the, uh, city attorney to keep an eye on the, uh, the cost and the hourly rate.
Review them every month.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, by Commissioner Hall. We've had a lot of discussion, so let's vote. Uh, item number eight, acknowledge the sales tax report received for October.
Now, sales tax, again, was up in October, um, we collected a little over one point, um, five million dollars in sales tax, and it's up about a hundred and sixteen thousand from last year. I gave this out, it's just a, it's hard to believe we're already in our first quarter, done with our first quarter of our fiscal year, but this was, these are the top sale categories, like retail trades, combination food service, wholesale trades. The retail trades is up, um, ten point eight percent over last year, the same time quarter. So, the businesses up on I forty are doing really well, and it's helping, and we do, gotta remember, we gotta pay two cents back, but, um, I think it's overall helping the economy to an extent. Um, but if you have any questions on this, and you'll notice the ones on the bottom, there's a huge fluctuation, but they're such small dollar amounts that if someone's overpaid and they have to give it back or something like that, it shows a huge... But, um, for the first, um, retail trade, obviously, is our largest, that's the big box, um, it's almost, you know, two point, almost two point eight million dollars in the quarter.
Well, this is trending nicely in November, December, typically, good months for something like Hobby Lobby as well, so...
I'm not, I can't say the name, it's a store.
I'm sorry.
What, what is manufacturing sales tax?
Manufacturing?
Yeah, it looks like that's way down.
There, I'm not sure how they have redesigned this, but there's probably fifty different, um, I can look them up and send you a snapshot of the different one. I think there's like twenty or thirty different categories in manufacturing.
Oh.
And like, believe it or not, movie theater is in, is now in information.
We're all in that.
Huh?
What'd you just say?
Movie theaters.
What, what's in arts and entertainment if movie theaters aren't in there?
They have, like, video stores and that kind of stuff, yeah, I, but the movie theaters are in information, because I double-checked that today.
Are, are in information.
Yeah, that's strange.
So, bottom line, it really doesn't matter, as long as we get sales tax.
I don't know.
My saying that manufacturing's probably, most of it's wholesale.
Yeah.
And, uh, it wouldn't take very much variation in retail, like, for...
Manufacturing, you know, I mean, when we get one point four million dollars, it's only thirty thousand dollars a month, so it's a, it's a small...
That's why I was saying, so...
It's really the retail trades, combination of food services, and wholesale trades that are the largest, that is the majority of our sales tax for the year, of the month, I should say.
And the professional area, what is that, Cindy?
That could be professional, like, products in a hair salon, that's, you know, that's in, that's one of the categories in the professional.
Because I saw there was quite a fluctuation there, too.
Well, what happens in the professional, they get, something gets messed up somewhere, and they end up having to refund, or it's got put in the wrong category, and it's just when they do a refund, it, I'm saying like ten thousand dollars, if it was in a larger category, it could have been put in the wrong category. And if they refund it, it just shows a huge change, because it's such small, you know, it's a large dollar amount compared to what it, you know...
Tax evasion, put it in the wrong category.
Or, very well, they, when they file them online, someone put it in the wrong code, because this is all filed, they all file online.
Well, this is for October, right? No, I mean, September.
The sale, right.
Through September?
September fifteenth for the big boxes.
So, in, in a month, we're expecting a better report than this, from, okay.
And it'll be interesting, too, we usually get, um, on the sales tax free weekend, we usually get a separate check, and I haven't gotten that yet, that usually comes toward the end of October. That's a totally separate that the state funds that, um, and those are pretty good-sized checks, I mean, like, fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
That's for late payments, for example.
I'm sorry?
Is that for late payments, for example?
No, that's the sales, the, uh...
Tax-free day.
Tax-free weekend?
Oh, okay.
We get a separate check, it does not come in our sales tax.
So, if, Justin, have we heard anything from the marketplace, or have they leased all their buildings, or what's the situation?
I believe they still have one small lease space available, and then they have their, uh, out, some of those out parcels, um, south and, and just north of, where Aldi is, there's, are some of the smaller pad sites still available, and then, of course, a large area for phase two, and, uh, I know that they're, are in discussions with the state land commission on, on retaining that phase two property, and so they can work to develop that over time, so, I think, pretty promising, um, developments and, and discussions, um, but there's no new, uh, stores that they're able to go public on yet.
How much are we above what we projected for this year? Because we, we budgeted flat, right?
Yeah, we budgeted like two, three percent, and I included, yeah, the Hunt property deal, um, we're up a couple percent, not a whole lot, but, I mean, at least it's steady.
Yeah, okay.
We're seeing it grow, so...
So, in our agreement, I'm trying to recall, did that just start at a certain date, or did we have to pay for it?
We have, the commission has to accept it first, and we have not accepted it.
Yeah, and then we start to pay it.
Right, but I'm earmarking, I've already earmarked the money, um, we do a spreadsheet every month that, when we report, so now, to find out exactly how much we own, so when we bring it to the commission to accept, I can write the check in today, so we, our applies to the...
I have one more question. Uh, Hallmark, are they moving out of the mall over to Shawnee Marketplace?
Yeah.
They are.
They are, yes.
Will, will that rebate still apply to the sale?
Yes, rebate will not apply to them, yeah, because when that contract was designed, if they move from one place, if they relocate, we don't have that.
You just gotta be able to track it in the sales tax receipts.
Right, as soon as we pay it, as soon we get it on.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, got it.
Right.
Or it times out if you don't pay it.
Well, then, you think that's gonna fill in that hole there? If Hallmark's moving, he said there's one space empty, and I'm hearing that Hallmark's going to move, oh, there's two spaces.
The road just got, got pulled, that last space.
Okay, there's two spaces empty, I didn't realize that, okay, that's what they're saying.
So, it's full now. So, how's it? There's no big...
Who's got the other space leased?
There's another retail space, they, they turned the firm in pretty recently.
Great, that's exciting news. That is exciting.
So, where would we be hearing from then?
Great, any other questions? Good job, that, that report that you gave us is really nice, thank you, if we can just figure out what's in each one of those categories.
I can send you a list, it's amazing, it is...
Yeah. Okay, uh, item number nine, city manager update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, just gonna give you a brief update this evening on a couple of items, um, the first of which is, uh, progress with, uh, our station number two and getting that, uh, on a track to, uh, to reopening. We have, um, sent out a formal, and published a formal request for qualifications from qualified firms, so we will, um, begin receiving those, and, um, that will close, I think, towards the end of the month, and then staff will work to, um, narrow that list down and do interviews on the most qualified, uh, firms, art, these are, would be architectural and design firms. And then before we, obviously, sign a contract or commit to spending any, any funds, we'll, we'll bring that back to the city commission for, uh, for review and, and approval, and then once we have that firm in place, uh, then we'll be able to, uh, prepare the, um, plans and get into the detailed, uh, corrections that need to be, need to be made on site, uh, which then leads us to the path of actually, um, formally going out for a project and, and hiring a contractor, uh, to, to fix the, uh, the structure and, and get it operational. So, it's a systematic approach that will take, um, several months from, from being able to hire a contractor to actually repair, uh, but in going through this, we know that we're gonna get a good, uh, architectural firm to work with us, someone that has experience with public safety facilities and fire stations, and specifically, and that we get a, a good value for, uh, for you and for taxpayers and for the staff that has to, uh, has to operate out of that building. And so, hopefully, uh, over the next, um, few months, we can, we can have that in place, hire the contractor, and then have a construction window, and until we have those plans in place and finalize those with the, um, architectural firm, we, I don't have a good estimate on how long construction will actually take, if I had to guess, it, um, we're probably talking, um, probably, probably about a year to go through this entire process from hiring the, uh, the architectural firm and going through the, um, bid process and, and hiring a contractor and then doing the work and having it reopen, so, probably about twelve months or so. Uh, in the meantime, we are, um, looking at the old fire station on Main Street, on East Main Street, and looking at making that operational on a, on a temporary basis, um, so that we can, uh, still have a good presence in that side of the community and make sure that our response times are, are sufficient.
Um, Justin?
Yes, sir.
Are there any, like, lessons learned, why, why we got into the situation with, uh, firehouse number two?
Definitely lessons learned, I think, uh, the biggest lesson is that we, we, um, really need to, 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 to look at doing things correctly the first time, even though fractionally that costs a little bit more money, it, it's still a lot cheaper than, than down the road, having to, having a problem than having to fix it, so, you know, unfortunately, fifteen or seventeen years ago when that project was done, if, if, uh, a little bit of additional funding was spent at the time, uh, we would have, we wouldn't be, uh, we would not be in this situation, and...
What's, what's a little bit, was, do we miss it by ten, fifteen?
The contractor and the dental contractor and the architect recommended to the city managers that time that, uh, raised the elevation of the site.
Right.
And X amount of dollars, I think, around thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars.
Build the pad up higher?
Bring it up higher, and, but refused to spend the money, so that's where we are right now.
So...
So, probably ten, ten percent of the, of the original construction cost, you know, additionally, would have, would have, would have fixed it.
Wouldn't be in this situation at all.
You know, now we're looking at committing, uh, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to get it, uh, to get it fixed, and so that, that's why, through this process and hiring a, a good consultant to work with, the architectural firm, you know, we want to have a good plan in place and a good building that isn't just a Band-Aid fix, but will hopefully get us several decades down the road, um, and so we have an opportunity now to, to kind of, to fix it right going forward.
There were zero change orders on that facility. The architect, uh, I mean, there was a set of, just, I don't think it was reported that way, but there's a set of plans, a good, a good set of plans, a good set of specifications, uh, cement was made, electrical cement, plumbing cement, everything was made, uh, on the walls and the interior, the sheet metal and everything else, and it was all approved by the architect and city manager at the time.
Just, there were no cloudy bubbles on the drawings at all, it's just...
I think they just had so much money, someone told me, and...
That's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they wasn't gonna spend that much.
Said, no matter, you can spend this much, and you gotta get...
General contractor had to get with in that, whatever it was, four hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sure, I'm sure it's what it was, and that's what they had to do.
So, we need to be a little more flexible with, you know, like, our, our commitment on this, too, as well.
I do think so, and, you know, sometimes the staff, we're maybe reluctant to come back for, you know, it, like, Commissioner Herr suggested, if the staff at the time had come back for a change order, you know, that there may have been some reluctance on their part to do that, because they might have to maybe admit that, yeah, said something wrong in the, in the design process, but, you know, I, I think, unfortunately, that wasn't done, and, and now we've got an opportunity to, uh, to fix it, um, well, but, but...
Yep, we shouldn't be here doing this, is what I'm... Yep. We shouldn't be here doing this, is what I'm thinking. Good.
Now, we will have to put a brick front on that, right? Because our new ordinance says metal buildings.
Some kind of rock.
Rock or something.
So, I think that the preliminary, very, very, very preliminary, uh, concept would be that we want this building to last, and, and, and if we're gonna spend, commit this money, let's, let's make sure that it, that it, it's a, it's a, the end result is gonna be something that we're all proud of.
Proud of, yeah.
And so, that would probably be a different coloration on the outside, and maybe some different materials in terms of the roof and the siding, so.
But we do have a city code on that as far as metal buildings.
We do.
So, we need to buy, make sure and abide by it.
Certainly.
But structural studs out covered with, uh, like I did insulated plywood and with rock on it or brick on it or anything else. And, I mean, it, for the four buildings we had, it's 26,000 dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, do you have other ideas?
I do have one more item. You want me to, okay. Do you have to answer any questions? The second item that I have is, uh, some good news, uh, and you may have saw this in the, in the, in the News Star recently or, or countywide, but the Shawnee Public Schools was recently awarded a large grant from the Vitas Foundation for some outdoor, um, outdoor educational s- space and, and recreational, um, amenities at the middle school. And included in that, um, funding package, um, our funds to complete a sidewalk from the middle school south to, um, south to MacArthur, uh, all on Union Street. That's been a, a big need, and something that we've identified for, uh, for many years. And it's something that we were, uh, working towards accomplishing, um, over time, maybe within another phase of sidewalk improvements. But luckily, uh, this funding has come through. It's come through again to the school, to the public school system, uh, not directly to the city. Uh, but what the city has, um, has, um, talked with the school district about partnering on this project and doing the engineering and design work, and handling the construction management process, um, bidding the project out and working with the contractor since it's within our right of way. And then the, um, public schools will, um, will pay the, the contractor, uh, expenses associated with the construction. And so, we're just, we're finalizing the details. I'll come back to you with some type of formal agreement, uh, between the city and the, um, Shawnee Public Schools. But, um, this is good news for, um, definitely good news for, for that part of town and students that walk. Um, looking at the scheduling and, and kind of the process, um, it's unlikely that this would be, uh, completed by the end of the school year, but it's very likely that it would be completed and open, uh, in advance of, of next fall and, and, and the next school year, so.
Well, sidewalks have been completed from that apartment complex up to MacArthur, haven't they?
Yes, so we do.
Now, it's done to some kind of school grant or something like that?
It was. We, we've got a grant, uh, Safe Routes to School, and worked with, uh, school system on that a few years ago. And so, from the apartment complex, north of 45th, south to the, um, to the middle school, there's a sidewalk and along the whole middle school frontage. Uh, but now we can connect it further south to, to MacArthur and, and Union.
That was going to be my question, I guess, Justin, is how are we doing on our sidewalk projects?
We're, we're doing well. We've, um, the Bryan Street, uh, trail is, is kind of in the home stretch now. I think it's probably 90% plus complete, uh, probably a couple more weeks to, to get it, um, all the way south to, to Highland. Uh, and then, um, maybe some, some final finish out work, punch list work that, gotta paint the stripe and do some, do some cleanup. Um, and then we are, uh, hopefully gonna be able to have that contractor start on the sidewalk all on Independence Street. And so, that will connect from that Bryan Street Trail and, and Independence, uh, westward to Center Street, which will then add that connection, that connecting point to Sequoia Elementary and to those neighborhoods.
East or west side?
I think we're going to.
Other south side.
I mean, other side, yeah.
My understanding is it's probably on the, on the south side because of that. This is the side the school is on, and there's already a sidewalk network partially on the south side.
It's definitely needed there. Those kids will need that.
I've asked the staff to check into a drainage problem there with that church.
Okay.
They, uh, their air conditioning, this, uh, water goes down and into the ditch and creates a, really a mud hole there.
Okay, okay.
Justin, probably we can, I went out and looked at it, and I don't know what it had been done about it or not, but that's really, glad to be corrected before we start putting the sidewalks in.
Okay.
But it stays damp and wet there, you can't walk down through there.
Uh, Justin, uh.
Yes, sir.
Received several calls on Bryan Street about those new lights. People are saying, are we getting a stoplight there in the middle of nowhere? And I said, well, if you'll look. And I figured this, I guess, I just drove by. The sidewalk's going down the west side, and then there's not enough right of way, I guess, to go down the west side further. And so, there's a, the two new lights, you push a button and they, will they flash, or will they actually turn red?
They will actually turn red. There'll be a stop bar painted, uh.
Okay.
That will do that. Of course, it's just push button activated, so.
Right.
Only when there's a.
When they're walking across and then down. Okay.
Zipping crossing, kind of.
Yeah.
We felt that was, given, given the, uh, the nature of that, that drive, this speed limit there and the fact that it's four lanes.
Good move, yeah.
Felt like that was this, kind of the safest option. There's, there's not a lot of traffic signals, uh, really on Bryan Street, so, you know, I don't think the traveling public will, will be inconvenienced, uh, too much, uh, on that, and it will be very safe then for pedestrians and, and bike riders. I would also mention that, um, OG&E has started the process of installing the.
Right.
The lights around the, uh, airport trail that was approved. I know that, we discussed that, and that was approved about a year ago. And, um, we're really beholden on, on OG&E in terms of their timelines and how they lay a project out and, 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 um, contract that out. So, uh, I, I wish it was, it was, it was done already, but, uh, but, but it just took a while for them to get that project scheduled and, and, and designed. Uh, but that's been done now, and, um, I know they've moved some equipment and some of the, some of the lights out there. And so, uh, that, that, that's good, because as it starts to get dark earlier, um, we'll be able to hopefully have that project, uh, done, have that trail lit, uh, for, for much of the winter.
And OG&E, the fans who've had so much construction and new construction here, that's.
Definitely.
Been involved in that, it's pretty tough to get them scheduled and get everything done. So, you have to be, schedule ahead of time.
Has there been any conversation with OG&E about upgrading some of the other lighting in, in the city, like in parking lots around downtown? Some of the older type lighting?
I think that there has been some discussions about replacing some of, and adding some lights in some of the parks. We've, we've, we've looked at Woodland Park, um, specifically. Uh, of course, we'll be doing new lighting as part of downtown streetscape along that, that area of Main Street. Uh, OG&E is also doing an audit of streetlights in the entire community, uh, to, to know exactly what we have, uh, and where it's located. They'll have.
Make sure we're paying for them.
Well, and that's part of it, that's part of it. We, we may not be paying for everything we should, or maybe, maybe we're.
Maybe paying too much.
Too many. Uh, they also tell us, uh, and it will take a while for this to be implemented, but they've also told me just recently that, um, that they will be transitioning their streetlights to, uh, LED lights. And as part of that process, um, it's a, kind of a smart light, if you will, that will have a sensor that will send a signal if it's out. And so, right now, if there's a streetlight that's out, we have to notice it and call OG&E, or a citizen has to call OG&E or call the city, and we forward it on. And so, it could take sometimes weeks for us to discover an issue and get it replaced. And then, and then many, and then weeks after that before OG&E gets to it. And with this new, um, system, they'll be notified immediately, and then it'll, it will get onto a task list much quicker. So, um, again, it'll be a while before that's in place, but, but when it is, I think we'll, I think our, um, our calls and complaints on that issue will, will go down dramatically, which will be great.
Well, you're looking at this fire station over there. They have a wall mounted light now that has a little red light on the end of it that indicates that the bulb, uh, is out, so forth. They, I put LEDs on, like, buildings out there, and they've got the little red light indicator on it.
Good.
Now, Justin, on the OG&E lighting audit that's being done, will the planning commission also get a copy of that so that they can have that, so they know where the lights are? Or how will that work?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know the format yet in terms of how that will be transmitted to us. I just know that the audit's being conducted. I think OG&E, um, is using kind of a third-party contractor for that. And, um, and once I have those results and kinda, I, I don't know exactly if, is it gonna be a map that I'll have, or a list, or, or something that, that we'll have that our engineering department can, can utilize with their, with their, um, software. Um, so depending upon the format, certainly we could, we could distribute, distribute that and, and utilize that, um, in any number of different ways, depending upon how much detail they give us. So, I'll certainly update the commission. Um, they were expecting that audit to be complete, I think, by the end of the year. So, at, maybe November, December, I'll be able to give you a better update.
Okay. I would appreciate that. And also, if you, at some point in time, uh, could look at the lighting, I guess, for Christmas, I believe. I'd like to have some information on that, where you do the placement of those lights at.
Okay.
I, I can enlighten you a little bit. The people bought those lights, okay?
We bought ours.
We bought ours, you know, and, um, when we moved, if, we had come before, when, when we met with some people down south, a lady had bought the light, and she moved, and she rode the Christmas bike, moved to the street light by her. You can buy those lights.
Can, can the streets buy the lights? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, persons did in the neighborhood.
Because I've seen part of it go down, like, on Independence, and it was like halfway down, and the rest.
And then somebody else didn't buy it, I guess. That probably won't happen.
Two reasons for that. First of all, the light voltage of the service on the lights can't, I mean, some of them are 440, and some of them are 277 and so forth. So, they can't, some of the Christmas lights can't be used in certain areas because of the voltage on them, the light voltage, it says.
And is that OG&E that does that?
It is. So, when we initially started that program, uh, years ago, um, there was a sponsorship program, so it, people could, individuals or businesses or homeowners associations could, could sponsor them. Um, but they're specific to those poles, and OG&E had to, had to, um, had to, um, put a reducer on it to.
Transform.
Transform and be able to, um, to utilize that. So, we routinely get calls, and people's, people maybe have bought one, then they move, and, and, and we, and we don't move, we can't physically move those, uh, because they're, it's very costly, um, through OG&E to get that, to get that done. So, so their placement is kind of fixed right now, and, and, and we don't, we don't really add to that either. Um, I mean, the, the program was started, um, I don't know how many years ago. I, I can get some more information for you, though.
Yeah, I don't think OG&E does it anymore.
25 years.
If you could have that discussion with OG&E about potential maybe sponsorship and, and just gonna put it before us. I know, um, my housing association is very interested in that. We'd love to have one in our neighborhood. And that street along there, I've had a number of constituents ask the same question, how come it wasn't completed? How come we don't have lights all the way down it? So, I'd like to be able to respond a little.
Okay. I can get some more information on that.
Any new business, Justin?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, any other commissioner comments?
Kickapoo is looking almost, almost done. It looks really, really, really nice. Still got a little bit of sidewalk work to do, but it's looking great.
They're working on it.
Yeah, they're working on it. It's looking fantastic, and it's even better driving down it now.
I like the new lights, with the turn signal, the flashing turn signal. Is that what we're gonna put out at, uh, when we made the contract with the, the state? Is that what it's gonna be like at, uh, 45th and out there to the east side?
I don't know. I'll double check that.
That's all right. I mean, but I really like that flashing.
I think that's the new standard, so I, I think anything that's.
And, and Justin, I know that at some point you're gonna come back to us and talk to us about this. We've asked about this a couple times, but the, uh, you know, there's still some, a couple of gaps in the sidewalk out there around on the east side of, of Kickapoo, out in front of Marketplace.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we talked about maybe completing the sidewalk there. I do see kids and stuff walking down this, you know, that load bus is there, and they're walking down to the Sonic or whatever. And, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to name anything. One of our retail establishments. It'd be nice to have, uh, have sidewalks.
All the way down to the bank.
Yeah.
I, I noticed there is a lot of, uh, work that's being done over, I guess, by the KFC, that big lot that Commissioner Hall's indicated had that big bunch of water, a pond in the back of it. So, I guess they're getting ready to, to begin work over there and do what needs to be done. Have, we got any information on any kind of timeline for that?
Well, we voted the final, wasn't it the plan or something on it?
Plan.
Final plan.
Zoning, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, we voted a long time for the zoning, and then we voted on the plan about a couple meetings ago.
I was just wondering if we had any report on that.
The road that's going in there?
They are, they are, they're, uh, obviously have done some, some more work. I, I think they've kind of, um, been through maybe some different contractors and different engineers on the project, but I think it's kind of back on track now, and, um.
Had engineering problem.
They had, they had an engineering problem, and, and of course, in the springtime, they had a, uh.
Water problem.
Really difficult with all the water. Um, so, I, I think it's back on track, Commissioner. I don't know exact timeframe when, when they're helping to actually break ground on any of the structures there. I don't know.
Does, does the city get any, uh, tax for auto sales?
We get the excise.
We do get the.
The excise is reclaimed, right? With Tida County?
I play that at the tag.
That's at the, when they tag it, right?
So, we do get the excise tax, the city does?
Yeah.
Get off of the parts.
What if they, yeah, if they sell a park in the shop, they.
Get off the parts, you don't get off. Get off of the parts they put on it in the, on the car at the garage.
How about the services, like oil changes and all? Yeah.
So, they're putting in four car lots there, so that will help the city from a tax perspective as well.
Be nice on you, Josh, too.
Yeah, because of the concrete and the building.
Okay, gang, any other comments?
Cindy, have we ever done a comparison on the three, or the areas in the city where we have like the retail sales going on to where, uh, kind of done a, maybe not necessarily a longitudinal study, but a study that would kind of show us how we're growing in those areas and the areas of concentration we may need to, to focus on? Because I know, uh, Commissioner Aggie, she is very busy and very desi- dedicated to the downtown area, and it's just been incredible, the development that's been going on down there. And I know Marketplace has done a lot of work, and Tim Berg is to be applauded for that at many levels, and so is the planning commission. And, but I'd like to know what the rest of the city. I know over on the, um, Harrison side, where sadly, uh, we are in need of some development over there. And I would like to see our businesses, uh, considered, or at least, you know, have a, a thought behind that. So, if we could look at maybe retail sales in the different areas, and you could show us how that's trending, I'd be interested.
Well, I mean, just by a quick glance and by who I can, you know, the sales tax that they submit, it's really from Independence, uh, or MacArthur, the majority of it. I would say a good 80% of it.
On 18 and Kickapoo and then.
Give me some figures and a percentage on that. I'd like to see a three-year trend, if you would.
It's gonna be hard to put it down, and I can, I can't tell you, I can do generic.
If you could just do maybe what's on Harrison versus what's on Independence versus what's on Main. Those three areas, I'd be interested in. And Chief France, earlier I had indicated about the texting. I didn't, I voted no on that, and I'd like to just say that the reason I did is because I feel like we needed more structure in that ordinance, and I didn't see it there. I believe if we're gonna comply with state law, we should do some citations in that. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'm still very interested in us maintaining and monitoring the texting. So, thank you.
Do you have something?
Just briefly, I just wanted to let everybody know that Shawnee has been named a finalist in a couple of awards with Keep Oklahoma Beautiful. Uh, one is the Shawnee Beautification Committee is named a finalist, and also the Shawnee Chamber Downtown Task Force, which is now the Historic Shawnee Alliance, is a finalist in the Paint Day Project. So, we will know on November the 30th, at the Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Conference, they'll make an announcement of who the winner and the runner, runner-up is, but at least we're being considered, we're finalists. Thank you all for, uh, voting for the Paint Day Project.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the city commission meeting, and I'm gonna call to order the airport authority. I will declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's vote. He's gone. Yeah, he'll be back. Go ahead. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, any new business?
No, sir.
Uh, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and call to order the municipal authority, declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Dykstra made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is consider bids on the South WWTB Emergency Generator Project. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner. On October 5th, staff opened bids for capital project SMA 15-05. This project is a backup generator for the south side sewer plant. We currently do not have backup power there in the event of a power failure. Staff has reviewed the bid tabulations, and coupled with the engineering recommendation, we didn't see any discrepancies. We would request that the city commission award this project to all phase of electric an amount of $225,000.
He done some other work for you too, hasn't he?
He has, we just recently finished a project at the Public Works Facility where we installed a backup generator there also.
We have a recommendation by the staff then?
The contract is recommended by the staff.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, a second by Commissioner Dykstra. Oh, is that you?
It was either Keith or me.
Okay, that's all right. I'll get Keith next, okay? All right, let's vote. Lisa?
Yes, still thank you.
Motion carries. Item number three is budget amendment on the SMA Fund 501, money for the generator at the water treatment plant.
$225,000 is that the amount?
We actually had some money budgeted, so this is amended for 175.
Okay.
I should have voted on these in reverse.
Yeah, given the money.
I'm just following the agenda, okay. Chair, entertain a motion in this matter.
We have funds available for this?
Yes. SMA, they had over like $1.5 million still left in reserves, and we have budgeted $2 million pipe bursting, for some reason, its sales for water decreased significantly, we just pulled back those two projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okey-dokey, Chair, entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw, let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Any new business?
No, sir.
Then I will adjourn our meeting. Thanks to each and every one of you.